We'll take roll call. Susan Baker?
Here.
Go ahead, Padalecki.
Here.
Kate Fain Koveak?
Here.
On the phone, Mayor DeGrimm.
Here.
Councilwoman McInerney.
Here.
We have a call. Also on the phone, we have Jess Wayne.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Cynthia Trevino?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to coming to our meeting tonight. The mayor unfortunately is on the phone and happy at home tonight, so I'll be kind of just keeping things orderly tonight and going through the agenda that we have scheduled. Again, thank you for coming out and I hope you all had a good holiday season and get started. So we'll go to the reading and approval of the December 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes.
I'll move to accept the meeting minutes from December 2nd.
December 2nd, I see. Any amendments or discussion? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to the reading and approval of the November 2021 financial summary.
I believe we accept the November financial summary.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Yes, sir.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we'll do our community development report, Ms. Fornoff, floor is yours.
Well, we are developing a very sustainable case, how about that? Basically, just one new residence, a couple of residents that are going back for repricing, so we'll probably see those in January. Nothing, a lot of pulses from the ETJ, heard some sad stories this week. Foundations already at three years. Hello, from me?
Sitting for the call.
Any questions?
I have a clarification, I don't know if it's on here or not, on East Lupon Road, you reported about a double wife that was moved in inappropriately, is that still on hold?
Haven't gotten anything from them, I guess I need to visit.
What was the issue? They didn't have a permit?
No, permanent, and we wanted to make sure they got signed right. Have you seen people living there? It was a muddy mess when I was out there and there's an adjacent home on that property, so I think everybody inherited it and grandmother and the son are living there. And the grandmother's getting just terrible chef.
She has an old house.
She's living in there with her grandchild and it's not a good situation. Anyway, she's trying to submit something to renovate.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the planning and zoning commission report, Ms. Glossick.
Getting informed, Glossick, planning and zoning, Mr. Mace is out with a little respiratory disturbance, he didn't feel safe coming. I'm not sure the details on the public hearing cancellation, but we're going to be sure that the PCT is following an accurate process. And the objective was to provide a final, this is what we've been working on, to find a final version of the revised planning and zoning ordinance. We're still missing two appendices that we have to get revised and hopefully we should even have those by the, hopefully by the end of this week.
Karen from the right?
Yeah, so as soon as we get those appendices in, then we're ready. And according to the Texas Local Government Code, once we have all of our pieces together, the PNC needs to have their public hearing. After that public hearing, then we would present to the city our final recommendation and then the city would continue with their public hearing to get the changes, or for you guys to vote on the changes. And that's what we've been doing for the last few weeks, been kind of a long drive now, process due to the code inability to meet. So, so I can get back with Mr. Mace, we'll decide, once we get the appendices, we'll decide when we can do the public hearing and the timing again.
Thank you. Any questions? Marshall's office, Marshall?
Y'all, good evening. I'm very proud to report that we are officially a state-recognized law enforcement agency. We did receive identification from TECO, San Luis Obispo, as well as DPS and the FBI giving us ROI numbers. As far as being able to take calls for service, we are in conversations and talks with Bear Metro, which is going to be where we dispatch, out of where we are dispatched emergency situations, calls, whatever ship or that we need makes location of. That is going to take approximately three to four months to be able to start taking calls for service by the marshal's office. Now, because we are now a recognized agency, we are able to take reports from citizens, we will just be a little limited as to our resources to property work cases. I will not be tending anyone away, I will exhaust my resources to do my best to help serve the public as they come in. It will just still, it's going to remain a process for a few months. It was explained to me by those at Bear Metro that the city has to be built within the CAD system, the computer-aided dispatch system. And the reason that is, is because though Bear County deputies already respond to calls for service within our area, they have to put up what's called a geo fence, so they know the responsive area for the marshal's office. And once that's put in place, then we can begin to answer 91 calls and things like that.
Now, is that fence active only during your duty hours? Because obviously, you're not going to be 24 hours a day on call?
No, but that does not affect how call will be dispatched. Eventually, the agency will be 24/7. There will be times again with the work schedule, as it was explained, maybe in the daytime, maybe out in the afternoons or in the evenings. So, they're going to know when there is myself or other deputy on duty will be available to answer the call within the city and its order, any TJ or as needed. Dispatcher will know that. So as now, as we continue to move forward, I invite meeting accounts member to reach out, I've got my card number, if they have any questions as to the direction of the office and what the next step will be, as we continue to move forward.
Have we published a status number for the citizens to call?
Not as of yet, but we can start doing that.
That number's going to your office?
Correct, correct. Again, as always, if it is an emergency, we always encourage everyone to dial that.
I agree with you.
Any other questions for Marshall? Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Full Court Report, Mayor DeGrimm?
Yes, thank you, everybody. I apologize for not being able to be there tonight. The municipal court is working to catch up to the very rapid success of the marshal's office and we are working with TML and TNDC, which is the Municipal Court Education Program that helps us get up to speed with all the requirements that we need to have for the municipal court. The first thing that we're looking into is the automated system for individuals who received, to be able to submit those electronically, so that we don't overwhelm our city secretary and city hall with responses and questions about paying tickets and things like that. And that is one of the things that is probably our primary focus, so we can work on getting that place. There is a cost associated with that and again, once we determine what all the costs are, we'll come back to the council and we let them know what kind of budget amendment. Because currently, the municipal court only has a budget allocated for $5,000 and that should cover most basic costs, but the cost of the automated system, to be able to have people pay their tickets online, is going to be a little bit more than that of around around $8,000. So, once I get those costs all together, I will let everybody know what that's going to be, so we can make the budget amendment for that.
Any questions for Mayor? Thank you, Mayor DeGrimm. We'll move to citizens to be there. Yet again, as Mayor always says, since it's been heard, it's your chance to talk to us and let us know what's on your mind. We can't respond to you except for factual information and we do limit your time to five minutes. So, first person would be Wanda Glossick, if you can promote and state your address, name and address.
Wanda Glossick, 13810, Nadee Way. First off, I'm reading this off my iPad because the internet's gotten so crappy. I want to put the word out to the citizens too, that February Starlink is, becomes available to the state of Texas and it's really worth your time to read and research about that internet source availability. The other thing I wanted to ask or talk about is that I'm wondering if there is a performer in place with the city on how long the city can stand these additions, like the town marshal and its requirements, the municipal court, the ticketing resolution process, the added city employment, and has a break-even point been determined on how long the city can go before we can afford it? I'm just looking at this from an analysis perspective, because I know that we have, you know, we've got funds, but, so I just, and I understand it's a necessary process for just what lies outside our city limits, which is scary to all of us, but I just want to know if there is a plan available or performer available to the public for how this funding is going to channel out over the next couple of years, do we get to that point?
We'll go to budgeting and I'll refer to the mayor, if she has a factual answer for that.
I'm hoping that I heard correctly, again, I know communication errors are perfect. So, what you're asking, Glossick, is what is the budgeting plan for the increased staffing and resources that the city is going to be looking at for the next couple of years? Or specifically for things like the marshal's office and the municipal court? Am I capturing that correctly?
Yeah, well, with all the increased expenses, we're going to, we need some offset. I'm assuming we're planning on a revenue from the marshal or the municipal court and all of that, and I'm just looking for a performer, if we will ever break even, where we're not spending the city money, or you're breaking even or making money.
I think the answer, the question is, Mayor, that we could answer is, are we reviewing that to make sure that we have a balanced budget going forward, that we're not overextending ourselves?
Thank you. Yes, the factual answer that I can give is that as we continue to look at growth that's needed for the city, we look at how we either balance the budget or have increased revenue that allows us to be able to pay for those services that we are adding to the city plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Glossick. Next is David Rockwoods, or McCavis.
Edelstein, David Rockwoods, or McCavis, 20781518 North. I just want to go and say that I am for the proposed recycling program for the city. Memory serves, I think Frontier wanted an all-or-nothing commitment from the city. I have, I'm aware that the council paperwork something out that if the majority of people want it, and that they could perhaps go forward. I understand there's over 600 households that participate in the traffic and, if they save 400 of those people, decide to go with recycling, that would be, that would be huge. My family and I produce about one to two bags of recyclable materials, I take my in-laws in town, and that, and if you do the math, it's about 80 bags a year, and say, if you take 400 households to participate, you're coming about over 30,000 bags a year of recyclable materials that are winding up here in the land until all 910. So I think it's something definitely, definitely worth pursuing. But also about the internet services for the city, I'm curious to see how that's progressing along. Recently, was looking into a job, a work-from-home job, but I didn't qualify because they require a hard-wired internet service, so some of these gateways are satellite internets, although I do have that Starlink. And unfortunately, that one, you know, those weren't work in this situation, I'd be a hard-wired internet such as fiber optics or something, so I'm just curious to see how that was progressing for the city.
I think we'll be addressing that later on.
My intensity, I believe. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all I have from the list. Are there any other citizens that would like to? Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to whole business now. First item on the agenda is roads, the road report.
It's been quiet, New Year's, everybody's taken off on our trimming and shredding obligations, and so we can continue those as we start back up in this new year, and that is it. I'll refer to Jess for the rest of matching fund project and roadway rehab projects.
Matching fund project, Jess?
Good evening.
Evening.
Gable Road Project, we had our final walkthrough yesterday, the Gable Road Project is complete from construction. We're just waiting on a couple letters and flyers from the contractors and we'll process the final pay application and retention. So that job is done. I went back with Ms. Prusil yesterday after me, just to talk to her a bit and get her lead on the situation over there. He teases back and forth with me a bit, but I think she believes it's, it's good and so from her standpoint, so that's, that's nice. So that job is wrapped up. So Lisa, I can comment on this as far as the order there. The 2020 project, as far as that runaround or prior to Christmas, we put an inch and a half to deal in Great Town and I don't know if any of you've traveled that road, but I think it's a massive improvement from the previous contractor that was out there. So that, that portion of that project is done. As far as for Lupon and Diller, we're going to have to wait for a lot of formal letter to do any touch-ups, because that procedure is different as far as the application of the aggregate. It needs a lot of warmer temperatures to complete it. And as far as 2021, the roadway rehab project, the project itself is completed except for foot-slip cycles. There are some areas the contractor needs to rework a little bit, where they place the material either cool them a little faster, but there's some setup areas that need to be done there and that also takes warmer temperatures. That contract is still open and we're going to have to keep an eye, because we have to have about 60, 55-plus degree temperatures at night time consistently to get that finished up. So I'll report back on that as we move on.
Any questions for Ms. Wayne?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, appreciate that. And going back to item three, Slicithe Drive, Mayor, do we have any update on that?
No, there is no update. We are in the, hopefully in the final stages of settlement, also an issue to get this settled and on the court system, but I have nothing to do on that.
Thank you. City Park? Okay, updating the internet services for the city. I was going to push this down to the, the, where is it? The America Rescue Plan. So, we do still have the 600,000 in the bank awaiting for internet services. I am taking a seminar through the Congressman Quayre's office, it's a national seminar called America Reconnect. And that's the best way to apply for the grant and get the fiber optics in your city. It's a three-day intensive deep dive, work with your city officials on how to get the attention of certain companies, I believe, too, like AT&amp;T, which I think will benefit us in the next item. But it goes very deep into getting the grant, basing your needs, what type of service you need and stuff like that. So, I think once I finish this course with this seminar, we'll, we'll be in a much better place on who we're approaching for internet. I haven't heard back from GVEC. I sent them an email, I'm waiting to hear back. If not, I'll have to give them a call next week and kind of push the issue to see where they're willing to meet us on this, because I'm sure they're also getting money from the infrastructure bill to, to provide this. So, that's where we stand on this right now. Any questions on the answer?
The students have been?
Yeah, I agree. Update on the recycling program, Councilwoman McInerney?
So, I had received an email from Frontier, right before Christmas, and they wanted to, Mr. Garrett, interested in, because I said, you know, we couldn't do the all-or-nothing and would be willing to talk about, you know, compromise, and they seemed to be interested in and wanted to meet either in person or via Zoom, but I haven't heard anything, I, you know, responded that I could meet, you know, anytime and for them to get back with me, and I have not heard back from them. So, I have, I thought maybe I might hear something, but I haven't, so I'm going to probably give them a call and see if we can have some kind of conversation, maybe over the phone.
Any questions?
Deborah, have you gotten any additional responses via the internet?
So yeah, a little by little, but I got responses via the internet and also hand-written responses that Mr. Garrett and Frontier dropped by City Hall. So there's certainly an interest, because there, there are, you know, in the responses that we've gotten, there are more people interested in recycling than are not. So I think that was, that was my question was, you know, we can't require all our citizens to pay for services they don't want, but can we have a conversation about some alternatives for those who do want to participate in recycling?
Right.
And they seem to be, you know, on board with that, but they just have not gotten back at things.
Yeah, do you, do you have a total number of responses received?
You know, it's, it's, it's kind of like voting.
Yeah.
You know, and there, I want to say, I had that, I'm at home right now, I don't have all my stuff with me. But I want to say there was like 75 online responses and probably 80% of those were for it and there was another, I don't know, 150 responses by hand and 90 of those were for it. I mean, there was, there was definitely a significant interest. And there are people who just, they don't want to do it and that's fine. But I think there's certainly enough interest that there is a conversation. I mean, you know, it, it really is kind of like voting. We don't get our entire population, our local population to vote and we're not going to get some that, that have responded to this, but there's definitely people that are interested.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Councilwoman McInerney. Okay, update on the funding for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We're working with Congressman Quayre's office on this with his grants coordinator. All the monies are going to be put up through a grant process. We're working with his office and a few other people for more specific things. When I first contacted them, she said, oh yeah, just go to governmentbrands.com and all that, so I went there and I immediately got off and I called her back and I said, this is totally great to me, I don't understand this and all that. So I do have a Zoom session set up with the grants coordinator for Congressman Quayre's office. She's going to walk us through it, she's going to recommend us some grant writers and the more specific grants, the needs that we need in the city. So I lay out exactly what we need in the city plus more. And, but so, she wants to make sure that we address like the roads, possibly bridges, roads, public safety, internet, we're already working on with them, and a bunch of other things that we're working on, so. But the grant process, if you haven't done grants, and I haven't, it's, it's a little bit overwhelming, so. We are working with the office, they're, they're being very helpful with us, so. But the main focus for us is roads, bridges and public safety. Any questions?
Is there any time?
I don't think so. I think it's till the funding's gone. Other questions?
Well, you said roads, bridges and?
Public safety.
Safety?
Yeah. Those are our top three.
That doesn't include the internet stuff?
Internet is number four, yeah, it's in there. But we're already got a start on the internet reconnect program. Now, a lot of these grants are, like for the roads and stuff, are full grants and there's certain matching grants that come out of there, but if we get the full grants, that's what we really need.
I know you're at the beginning stages, but is there any strings attached to these grants, like open up for rural income housing in the community?
I haven't got that far yet, but I'll keep that in mind.
I just tell you, the pulse of this town, at least several years ago, when we were looking into the grant deal, that was a big concern for those citizens, so can I keep that on the radar?
Right, and I will, I was aware of that. And, but what separates this from the other grant opportunities, it's as part of this bill for the infrastructure. It's just people have to go get the money. It's just, they're just not handing it out like they did for?
Generally stipulations.
Right.
Like you said, because I think I researched a grant when we were starting the park and we could probably get one, but the biggest restriction was we could never do anything different with this park property. It had to be, once a park, always a park.
Right.
And that wasn't really what we wanted, just in case we needed to do something.
Right, and, and before we apply for any grants, I will bring them up to the council and, you know, everybody will get a chance to review them, so. Because like I said, I'm good at this, I know some of you worked on it before, you know?
It's a complicated process.
Right, so you could catch up on that I'd missed, the more eyes, the better. Update on Green Valley SUV Clark Creek subdivision wastewater treatment plant, Mayor DeGrimm?
Um, yes, so we received a letter back from the council that was supporting the city and had put in our formal request for a hearing. The TCDQ did review the comments, the requests that were held at the public hearing back at some town deal with, you know, it was held at St. Henry. And they had determined based upon all the information that they were wanting to proceed with permitting the waste management treatment plant. The only stop on that was that there were several parties who had requested a healing on several factors and and we were one of the entities that had requested a hearing. Uh, there is something called standing. I don't want to get into a whole legal thing. But, uh, the, the TCQ has to determine whether or not you have something called standing to be able to request a, a hearing. And standing means that you have actually some potential harm to you as a person or an entity that allows you to have standing to, uh, protest or contest the, the permit action. Uh, we are waiting to hear back who TCQ is going to determine has standing to, uh, hear and contest a hearing. Again, we aren't the only entity that requested a contested hearing on these matters. Uh, there were several private citizens who live right on the area where the wastewater treatment plant is going in, who have very good standing, uh, to, to contest and request a, a protested hearing. So, at this time, we are just waiting to hear back from TCQ as to whose permit arguments that they will, uh, agree with or won't agree with to have a contested hearing. Uh, I'm fairly confident, and I shouldn't say this because I'm not an attorney, per se, but, um, I can't guarantee there will be a contested hearing, but there is enough standing by enough entities that there probably will be a contested hearing. I just don't know if one of them will be the city of St. Hedrick.
Any questions? Thank you, Mayor. AT&amp;T unfinished projects in St. Hedrick, Councilman Pavloski? You are the mayor? Oh, sorry.
I, I know this.
I know that, I think we can defer that down to the, um, right-of-way information that's coming on item K in a moment.
Okay.
I, I can tell you that the, the situation on the intersection of North Lupan and Graytown has not been resolved. The, the two pylons that are there, um, where the AT&amp;T structure is, it's almost on the edge of the road, belongs to the resident that lives right there. That's his property, and he's, he's gonna leave the pylons there because he's concerned to traffic, as it should. That has not been, uh, been resolved. And also, the, the spot by the, the church up the road on Lupan has not been resolved.
Thank you. Update on new city staff positions, hiring a city manager, Mayor Grant?
Yes, at the last, uh, meeting, uh, we discussed the, uh, need for a city manager, and I told the council that I would look into what that entails and salary ranges for that. Um, in looking at, uh, for example, salary ranges for city managers, uh, there is a low range for individuals who are working with either small cities, where have some limited experience, that is in the $50,000 range. Uh, medium range for most city managers in, uh, Texas. And I know that's a really big range, because we're talking little towns, medium-sized, big towns, uh, is closer to $70,000. And then, as we get into, obviously, the really big places, they're just astronomical. It's, it's not even, it's not even i- i- in a, in a, in a range anybody wants to discuss for where some of the big, um, city managers are. But for, uh, looking at comparable cities of our size, um, with, um, perhaps someone who doesn't have years and years and years of city manager experience to someone, uh, who is newer into the industry, would probably be in the $50,000 to $70,000 range. Again, I, uh, highly recommend that the council, uh, look at and perhaps present a motion to, uh, start searching for a city manager for the city. Uh, as we continue to grow, as we continue to have all of these issues, we really need somebody in a full-time position for the city.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to start the process and see where it leads us.
So, we have a motion to start the process and see where it leads us?
I second it.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I just think, uh, that, you know, considering the growth and the, um, change that St. Hedrick has progressed through in the last two years. I mean, everything from, um, we added a police department. People have been asking, your citizens have been asking for a way to deal with, uh, noise ordinances and pet issues and, you know, dumped animals and speeding through, uh, school zones. Um, and these are all important issues. And so, because of that, we, we felt the need to get a police department. We needed a, a, a judge to be able to, um, deal with tickets that went through that. Our, our small, little community is, is growing by leaps and bounds, whether, whether we, you know, are ready for it or not. And the job that it takes to manage all of that is more, I think, than our mayor has been, you know, the time that it takes. I mean, Mayor Grant has been amazing, and, uh, we'll just be lucky if she can stay with us and, and, and have that time to, to manage all of that, because it is a, a huge job. And I think as we get, you know, all of these, um, communities that are, uh, you know, encroaching on our area, it, it, for better or for worse, it just, it makes things more complicated. It adds to our, our, um, the decisions that we have to make and the things we have to consider. And we need more help. We need someone who can, um, who can manage the city. And, um, and certainly, Mayor Grant is, her, her knowledge and her expertise and her, um, um, her structure of, uh, handling the things we've had. You know, the, the flood issue that we've had to deal with is something you, you know, not had to, to think about before. And so, we are now moving into a new phase. And I know people are concerned about finances, and that definitely needs to be something that we consider. But a city manager is something that our community needs to start thinking about as we move forward.
And, and I, I, let me add one thing, um, to that, another complexity. So, um, I know that you all are aware that we have a requirement under budgeting to have a financial officer and a financial investment officer. And I did finish taking that, uh, financial investment officer, uh, course. And it was very enlightening for me, because I really was not aware of all the complexities that had to do with financial investments for a city. And to date, we have traditionally invested in CDs and things like that. Um, but, but our budget is going to become more complex. And as the one citizen asks, as Ms. Blasek asked, and where do we get the budget, uh, funding for the increase in services and the increase in staff? And that's a really good question. We, we really need to be able to have somebody who's got a good handle on how we're managing our budgets and how we're managing our assets. Uh, Mr. Hafner is talking about grant funding, and that's great. We need to do that too. But somebody has to manage the financials of the city to ensure that as we grow, given our limited revenue sources that we currently have, is somebody that, that is really looking at how do we get better budget, um, possibilities with grants and other fundings? And how do we manage our investments so that we become a city that actually can keep pace with the demands that we're being asked for by, by the growth that, that we're seeing, whether it's from external or internal, uh, purposes? We have to be able to manage that too. So, it, it is the administrative piece of it, and it's, and it's growing, growing. But it's also the financial, um, aspect of keeping us financially healthy. And that's, that's a lot of work. Uh, and that requires somebody who has an understanding about how, how those work as well. So, that's just another thing to think about.
And, um, if I can, uh, I'm not saying for or against this, but I, I was doing some reading over the last couple of weeks on city managers to, um, specifically, and Mr. Trevino, please correct me if I'm wrong, this came from the TML, uh, City Guide Handbook, where a city administrator is, manages all the departments of the city. So, with our city, we split us up between the council and the mayor. The mayor's doing the lion portion of the council, as it is too. So, the roads, for instance, parks and all that. Those are all department head areas where we're working on. What, what the city manager does is consolidate that, where we could still do the roads, or we get, the city manager could find out that information on roads on our own. But the purpose of the council is to set policy, not to be sharing all the work out. And as we are growing, it's being harder and harder every day, where the mayor's picking up a lot of the slack of this, what a city manager should be doing. You know, the mayor doesn't have to do this either. We could be redistributing it out to the council. And it, it's a lot of stuff, and a lot of stuff we just don't know. Um, a few you do through experience, but, um, a lot of us don't, also, on the council. Um, and a, a city manager alleviates that load where we're reporting to one person who's doing all that reporting, the work, the reporting to us, so we can set proper policy. And that's our job, in the council, is to set policy. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Trevino?
Um, actually, I think Ms. Trevino just got, uh, dropped off. She just texted me, uh, an email saying she lost the connection. And, um, I don't know if Janice is able to, to call her back and get her back on. She lost the connection. But what you're saying is essentially true. Uh, the only exception to that is in the usual management system of a city. The marshal's office reports directly to the council. They, that office does not report to the mayor. Um, you think of it, you can think of them as separate departments. There's the mayor's department, or mayor's office, so it's a marshal's office. And a marshal's office would report, um, to the council. Uh, but, but you're correct in what you're saying. Everything else falls under the mayor's, uh, office. And that includes human resources. So, all the personnel issues, um, hiring, firing, payroll, uh, all of the policies and procedures. I'm in the process right now of trying to complete. Uh, I just did a, a policy manual for the city. It is reviewed by the attorneys, um, looking to make sure I haven't missed anything or made any obligations to the city for personnel that wasn't appropriate. But that, that's almost a 50-page manual on policies, and it covers everything from, uh, discrimination to, uh, timesheets to, uh, charge card. It, it's very comprehensive. And to have, as, again, as we grow with more personnel, somebody has to manage all of that and make sure that those policies are being followed, that, uh, payrolls are being done correctly, that our budgets are being looked at appropriately. It, it really becomes very expensive, and will continue to be so as we grow.
Uh, Mayor, yeah, uh, Janice is trying to call something right now to have a reconnect. Will you just hold on one second?
Hey, Jan.
Hi, we're trying to get you reconnected.
All righty, ma'am. Sorry about that. I don't know what it did.
Are you on?
Yes, ma'am. I am on and ready.
Is everybody else still there? Mayor, Jess?
Yep, still there.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Recap, the motion was to start the process, to start the process and see where it goes. It was seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by start the process and see where it goes. Does that mean that the council is making a motion to begin the search for a city manager? Uh, that language seems a little vague to me.
That was my intent, to start the process, to seek a city manager. Maybe you may not find him.
Okay.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I don't know how to reword it.
To start the process to look for a city manager?
Yes, that, that works.
Okay. So, we have an amendment on the motion, since you seconded the original motion?
No, Deborah did.
Oh, Deborah. So, Deborah, do you second that, the amendment?
I do.
Okay. So, we have an amended motion to start the process and see where, uh, to start looking for a city manager.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The amendment carries. The original motion, uh, the original motion amended is to start the process and look for a city manager.
Yes.
That's amended. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Update on Public Safety Task Force. Is that you, Mayor, or Jerry?
Um, I think we missed an item, um, of the Bureau of Fire Task.
Oh, yes, we did. I checked it, um, way too soon. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Bureau of Fire Task.
You need me to get this corrected?
Yeah. Services Agreement for Fire Services. Mayor, do you have an update?
Yes, sir. Um, uh, Ms. Trevino, uh, has reviewed the, uh, professional service agreement with Bureau of Fire Task. She's made some recommendations. They're mostly, uh, related to indemnity, liability kind of clauses. Um, I have reviewed those. There's only two primary processes that we're looking for Bureau of Fire Task to help us with at this time. Uh, one is, uh, fire inspections, and the other is, uh, health food inspections. Now, granted, we don't have, um, any health food, uh, inspection issues at this time, but we, we don't know when we'll get a, um, company or somebody in that wants to do a restaurant or some kind of food service in the city. Uh, and currently, we don't have anybody that does food inspections or health food inspections. So, those, uh, of all the services that they had in their agreement, those are the two that I thought would be most helpful. Uh, again, the, uh, the service agreement does not require us to use them for everything. It has a kind of laundry list of services that are available. We can, can choose to use those. Uh, but I have reviewed the agreement with Ms. Trevino's, uh, recommendations, and I'm doing editing on the service agreement. And I will be sending that back to Bureau of Fire Task this week and, and see where their attorneys come up and say, uh, we agree or don't agree with that. And once we get some settlement on that, we can go ahead and sign the agreement. So, they will do fire inspections for businesses and get, uh, food services for health food services. All the other services like planning and zoning, um, floodplain management. We already have Mr. Swaim as, as our, our primary engineer, who is, uh, very capable of doing and continuing to do those services.
Any questions for the other? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now, update on the Public Safety Task Force. Uh, Mayor, is that you or Jerry? I'm not sure.
Uh, actually, that's, uh, Marshal Sodov again, just, uh, to, to reiterate, uh, what we are, um, we asked for that, is, um, I've asked the marshal, as the director of public safety, to take the lead on, um, looking at, um, some of our, uh, public safety issues, particularly roads, safety, and come back to the council with some, uh, analysis of where there are issues within the city that we should probably be addressing. And then, uh, involving the engineer to make some recommendations of how we should handle that. So, I'm gonna hand that back over to, um, the marshal.
Thank you, Mayor. So, at this time, myself and the city manager supervisor have continued, have driven the city, continued to tour the city to identify hazards on our roadways and within town. Um, we continue to identify that. We plan on putting together a report, uh, of opinions, because, of course, we are not experts in, in roads. And, uh, once we are able to put together a report, we'll get the, uh, Council of Arcobia and, um, then move forward on getting that before the engineer goes there.
Excellent. Thank you, Marshal. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, in your package, you have the right-of-way ordinance management and... Okay, in your package, you have the driveway ordinance management and management permit. Uh, Mayor, would you like to discuss this?
Um, actually, I'm going to kind of turn this over to, on Ms. Trevino. Uh, what you have is the draft ordinance. And we sent that over to Ms. Trevino to review. Uh, I think she was waiting for some comments on that. And from there, getting a final draft ordinance to us. Is that a correct statement, Ms. Trevino?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So, uh, if there's anybody, or if there are any comments that I need to incorporate or anything that we need to, to get revised prior to finalize, please get those forwarded to, to Mayor or to Janice, and they will get that forwarded on to me. And then we'll finalize and bring that back to, to council.
Any questions?
I think we got one last meeting from Ms. Foronoff. She wants to make sure the driveway entrances are included in this and not be in the minutes. So, that's already written.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Trevino? Okay, the May 1st, 2021 election. The next St. Hedwig general election will be on May 7th, 2022 to elect mayor, city council place two, city council place four. Filing period for a candidate to file an application for a place on a ballot is January 19th, 2022 through February 18th, 2022. Apply here. Submit application to the city secretary at city hall.
And just as a note, you must be a resident of the city limits. Uh, in the past, we had had individuals who, if they live in the E T J, they can, uh, apply for one of the positions. And I believe you must be a citizen of the city limits.
Must be in city limits, 12-month resident, U.S. citizen, just a lot of?
Uh, I believe, I, I believe, uh, Ms. Trevino, uh, correct me if I'm mistaken. I believe for actual, I think it's like six months.
I thought that was for a type B and C city. Type A general city was 12.
You may be correct. That, that's a finding that our attorneys were helpless with.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think Councilman Haffner is correct. He's excellent. Actually, go real quick. In the meantime, if you all want to continue discussing, then I'll pipe back in.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what we certainly can do is, at least we can have until the first opportunity for anyone to file is January 19th. We certainly can get clarification on that so that if anybody does apply and has a question whether residency is six months.
It was in the T M L guide for city officials.
Six months?
12.
12 months?
For a type A general city.
12 months, thank you.
Okay. But I would like Ms. Trevino to confirm it, though, definitely. Okay, and the 2022 Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors election results. We have a letter from the appraisal district, the Honorable Mayor Brown. Thank you. To each of the nominees to the board of directors of the Bear Appraisal District for the 2223 term and to the taxing units who cast a vote during the process. As required by section 6.03 Texas Property Tax Code, voting resolutions and ballots are required to be submitted before December 15th. Chief Appraiser has counted the votes and declared the five candidates who received the largest cumulative votes total elected and closed are the voting results. 2022, 23 members of the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors are: Jerry Byrum, nominated by Southwest ISD; Trista Berry, nominated by Bear County; John Fisher, nominated by Northeast ISD; Dave Gannon, nominated by Northside ISD; and Dr. Adriana Rocha Garcia, nominated by the City of San Antonio. Any questions about the process? Please contact me or my executive assistants, Jennifer Rodriguez and Sarah Lee, Michael A. Mosquita. And if you notice in your package, it does have the numbers for the results. There is no new business to be brought before us? Any announcements? I'd just like to bring up one thing. There was a, a very good friend to the city, Albert Stalzak Jr., passed away a few weeks ago. Um, he was fire chief in the city. He was a law, the longest-serving commander of the American Legion post in St. Hedwig. Uh, he's on the water board, I believe. Um, he's done a lot for the community. And just wanted to let you all know, his funeral will be Saturday, 10:30 a.m. at the annunciation of Blessed Virgin Mary.
10 o'clock?
I thought it was 10:30.
It's usually 10.
Okay, 10 o'clock.
There's no visitations tomorrow.
And tomorrow's visitation is that finished tomorrow. Uh, I believe between 4:00 and 7:00, 4:00 and 8:00?
Visitation of the rosary.
Right.
Right?
Five.
Five.
Five, five a.m., yeah. And the rosary is at 7:00?
He was actually the same manager at Central Water.
Yes, he was the general manager.
He was the first general manager.
Yeah, at Central Water. Um, a lot of people here knew him. He was, he was a very good man, good friend. So, just wanted to let you all know. Any other announcements? Okay, uh, the next meeting date will be, if nobody has?
January 3rd.
January 3rd. Any objections to that? Okay. I do declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Haffner, for taking your time.